Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our Board of Education meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below. Or if you're at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment that there may be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we're discussing are: We have one liability claim, conference with labor negotiators, public employee appointment, public employee performance evaluation, and public employee discipline dismissal, release, and complaint. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We will reconvene for our open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you. See you at 6:30. The one. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting tonight. Please excuse us for being a couple of minutes late, about four minutes late. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below. Or at Dejawn, you can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have an opportunity to make public comment. Unfortunately, President Gonzalez Hoi has pneumonia and could not be here tonight. Therefore, he asked me, as the clerk of the board, to chair tonight's board meeting. President Gonzalez Hoi, we hope you feel better and we hope your family continues to be in good health. The board recently voted to change the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last now one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it has been turned into staff, they are placed in order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time in switching between public comment at Dejawn and on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon of the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if assessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speaker is permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and usually and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, if you're willing and able, please rise. Dr. Hurst, please lead us through the pledge.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. We'll now move to the land acknowledgement. Dr. Hurst, will you please lead us in the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chacheno, Owekma, Karkin, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to roll call. Dr. Hurst, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely. President Gonzalez Hoi is not here today. Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening. I'm present.
Trustee Phillips is not here today. Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Santos.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Baron.
Good evening, present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board for tonight, we're doing three questions per board member and one and a half minute comments. Dr. Hurst, do we have a report out from closed session?
Yes. The following has been approved by the board, those board members that were here for summer school appointments. For Kennedy High School intern administrator, it's been approved. Kennedy High School, high school assistant principal, approved. Kennedy High, another high school principal position, approved. El Cerrito High intern administrator, approved. El Cerrito High special ed principal, it's been approved. De Anza High intern administrator, approved. De Anza High high school assistant principal has been approved. De Anza High high school principal, approved. Dejawn Middle School, middle school assistant principal, it's been approved. Dejawn Middle, middle school principal, approved. Betty Reed Soskins, middle school assistant principal, approved. Also, Betty Reed Soskins, middle school principal, approved. Tara Hills Elementary intern administrator, approved. Another Tara Hills Elementary special ed principal, approved. King Elementary special ed principal has been approved. Lincoln Elementary, elementary school principal has been approved. Obama Elementary intern administrator has been approved. Another Obama elementary position, elementary school principal approved. Bayview Elementary intern administrator, it's been approved. Bayview Elementary, elementary school principal approved. Dover Elementary intern administrator approved. And I will read the name off of this last one because it's only partially approved since it's a job share. Dover Elementary, Mr. Michael Hatcher, elementary school principal, that portion has been approved.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst.
Yes.
Board, we will be going back to closed session after open session tonight to conclude our business. We are now on B7, Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, please look over the agenda. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. The parliamentarian, Ms. Dunning, just told me that I skipped public comment. I am so sorry. We are now going back up to B6, WCCUSD Public Comment. Staff, do we have any public comment in-house?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Please call that first person.
Our first public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening, everyone. I am Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. Today is Administrative Assistance Day. I would like to just say a huge thank you to all the administrative assistants in the district. We have several of them here this evening. We have those that show up to the office manager, secretary, clerk typists twos, the registrars, the attendance clerks, anybody, the scouts, anybody that will help out as an administrative assistant. I really truly appreciate the job that you do. You are in my heart because you always help me when I ask for it or you tell me a good reason why you are unable to help me. And you're here for our students. So thank you very much. And I just want to commend all of them for the work that they do and the dedication to our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chamberlain. Do we have anyone online?
Yes, we have one public comment online. Ms. Amy Aldrich, please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Amy Aldrich. I'm an older adult school teacher. I have been teaching for West Contra Costa Adult Ed since 1999. I teach senior fitness. And I have a problem with my principal. And as a member of the board representing the older adult program, I want to point out some of the things that have been occurring in my life. I was not paid the amount of money that I was due. And I'll just give you one example from the month of September. I was paid $144.86 for the 18 hours that I worked that month. I was short $437.70. So when we send the letter of no confidence about our principal, that is my reason for voting against him. I don't have any confidence in him and I still have not been paid properly. That's the first issue. The second issue is sick pay. I was dreadfully ill most of the school year and I've submitted my sick pay and I have not been paid for that either. So I am starving. I am a senior. This could be considered elder abuse. There is also a problem with Mr. Mancing about misogyny. I convicted, I am convinced and convict him of misogyny. There are many cases of that. I know there's no way to prove it. But I just think it should be known that this is disgusting behavior in our day and age. And I would like to get to the point where I could forgive him and I hope I do. Thank you so much for listening. I hope you heard me.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more in-house public comment?
Our last public comment is Lon Harrison.
Thank you.
Good evening, board and all the district staff. I just wanted to tell you guys, I have seen the increase in services and programs for our black students in our district. However, we need to ensure that this continues. We have a lot of service providers who do want to service our children, but the principals are not being aware of them. So I would like the district to make more effort in letting principals know about the resources and services that you guys do have listed as service providers, but the principals may not be, or may not know how to effectively select those services and programs. Also, I want to thank you guys for the increase in the APACs that's going on. However, we still have principals who are not ensuring that their site APAC is functioning. And also, I'm encouraging the board to look at those school site plans and make sure that the APAC leaders are signing them and that black parents are involved in decision-making when it comes to our school site budgets and how black children are receiving services at the school sites. Because a lot of the time, those school site plans are not signed by black parents. And then the resources that you guys provide to the school sites for our parents, we don't know how our children are receiving those resources. So please do your due diligence when you're looking at this coming school year, school site plans and making sure that APAC parents were included in those sites decisions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more public comments? Okay, go ahead.
Our next public comment is Kay Soriano. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Karina. I work closely with the counselors, so Karina Ponse Soriano. I'm really concerned because our counselors, you know, are right now receiving calls from HR letting them know that their sites are being reduced, giving them offers to move. But really, the numbers have not been looked at. I did a search of numbers in terms of the sites that are being reduced. And it doesn't make sense. For example, Pinot High School is being reduced to .80, but if you look at the numbers, they have enough numbers to start every single year with a full-time counselor instead of reducing that person to a .80. And then we're getting rid of counselors that are great. I have counselors who are thinking of leaving. We're going to lose really good staff who have been there to support our students. I really urge the board to take a look at those numbers again. And really, those numbers should also be looked at with a committee. It should be a committee of counselors, a committee of admin, you know, that really have worked with the schools and numbers and know their population. We can't keep losing counselors. We need them. Our students need them. We're doing a disservice to them. Our counselors don't just do scheduling, they do mental health support for all of our students. So I really urge our board, please reach out to me. I work with our counselors closely. I really want to be a support person to be able to keep them and not be able to just shuffle them around and give them to three different sites. You know, it's not just about the reductions. They're reducing. Why are we reducing and putting people and shuffling them? Thank you. Hope you reach.
Thank you very much. And do we have more public comment? One more? Okay, please go ahead.
Our last public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. My name's Jean Kinster and I'm a teacher over at Bertie Elementary. And I'm really concerned about the janitorial situation. I have heard that on May 19th, all of the Scrubs Crew and part-time janitors will be let go for whichever reason. But we don't have enough janitors. And I will say that, I think it was, looking for my date, Monday, April 17th, I went into my room and my room had not been cleaned since Wednesday prior. I went into my other room and my classroom and the urine that was left on the floor was crystallized. It smelled so bad in that bathroom. Our bathrooms aren't getting cleaned and this is kindergarten. When I ask Scrubs Crew as they go running through, hey, you know, are you going to clean our bathroom? No, we don't have time. We're told we have to go to three or four or five sites tonight, so we're just emptying trash. Is there any way we can make sure that our bathrooms are being cleaned? Our kindergarten kids are walking through this on their shoes. And then they're walking on the floor that's not getting mopped. And then they're walking on the other floor outside of the bathroom is not getting mopped. And they're walking on the rugs that aren't getting vacuumed. And they're sitting and playing on these surfaces. And I'm sure you can imagine about the germs going on there. And it's just kind of gross and our kids deserve better. And I know that sometimes the janitors like to use these blowers because it's faster, but that's not sucking the dirt and stuff out of the rug. So I'm really, really hoping that somehow we're not laying off our janitors or we have a fix for this or just worried about my little kids getting sick all the time and maybe staff as well. And I honestly don't have the materials, the supplies, the ability, or I'd start cleaning my own room. I already vacuum. I'd start washing floors and toilets too if I have to, but, I mean, and who do I time card? Just wondering. But anyhow, I'm hoping that this isn't true and that there's some way to fix this. When I talk to the janitors, they say that, oh yeah, downtown, they said to do this. And the one guy said that the supervisor was there that Saturday. He never went into that bathroom. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Dr. Hurst?
Yes, I was going to ask if Dr. Greenwood could speak to that issue around custodial staff.
There's been no discussion with Labor regarding any movement of custodians at this time?
Thank you so much, Dr. Greenwood.
Or any layoffs regarding that.
Thank you so much, Dr. Greenwood, for that clarification. Board, thank you so much. Public for your public comment. Staff, we have zero public comment left. Is that accurate? Okay, board, we're going to move to B7, Agenda Review and Adoption. If there are no objections, I will adopt the agenda. We will adopt the agenda. Are there any objections? Seeing none, agenda is adopted. Board, we are now moving to B8, Approval of Minutes for March 27, 2023. Without objections, we will adopt the minutes. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved for March 27, 2023. Thank you, board. We're now moving to B9, Resolution Number 2223-78, School Lunch Hero Day. Ms. Sanders, I believe this is your item.
Thank you. My apologies. One moment. Resolution number 222373, is that correct? That is Dr. McIntyre's item.
I'm sorry. So Resolution 2223-73, School Lunch Hero Day, is Dr. McIntyre's item? Okay, Dr. McIntyre, go ahead, please.
Thank you. It's truly an honor to share with you the School Lunch Hero Day, which was May 5th this year. It was created to thank the thousands of nutrition professionals who prepare healthy meals, adhere to strict nutritional standards, and navigate student allergies and offer services with a smile nationwide. And especially here at West Contra Costa Schools. The School Lunch Hero Day provides the opportunity for the community to thank these hard-working heroes in recognition of the importance of the nutritional value of school meals. We need to recognize the importance that the nutritional value of school meals is well documented by school nutrition employees while balancing the many roles and following numerous federal, state, and local regulations to ensure the safe and healthy meals are available in schools and in our local communities during down periods. Additionally, the school's nutrition staff are an integral members of the educational team who nourish the lives of our students by feeding them and being a positive influence in their lives. For many children, school lunch is the most important and nutrient-rich meal of the day. And for that, we'd like to thank our heroes at West Contra Costa for serving over 8.8 million student meals last year.
Thank you so much, Dr. McIntyre. Board, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead and move. Resolution number 2223-73, School Lunch Hero Day, May 5th, 2023.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Can I get a second?
I second.
Thank you so much. Board, any comments? Trustee Reckler?
Just thank you to everybody who works in food service. It was a big part of my career and I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Board, I also forgot to put the timer up, but any other comments? No? To the vote. Trustees Santos.
Santos, yay.
Trustee Baron?
Santos, yes.
Baron, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds, yes, it passes. Thank you unanimously. Thank you very much, board. We are now moving on to our. Does that mean? It may have been an echo. I have no idea what happened. Okay, we're now. Okay, hold on. We're going to have to mute Ms. Maria, friends. That's okay, Fran. Don't worry about it. Go ahead. Okay, great. All right. We are now moving on to consent items. Are there any consent items being pulled? If so, please raise your hand so I can call on you and acknowledge the item that's being pulled. Any consent items being pulled? Trustee Reckler?
I don't have anything to pull. I just have a brief comment.
Thank you. Anyone have a consent item to be pulled? No? Can we get the timer up, please? A minute and a half? Trustee Reckler, if you'll wait for that timer and then feel free to go ahead with your comment.
I want to thank the team for upping and increasing the accountability on the annual measurable outcomes on the Urban Intellectuals Contract. I really appreciate that you went back and reworked it and worked in better measurements to measure success in the program. So thank you very much. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? No? Okay, without objection, I'm going to move the consent items to be approved. Are there any objections? No, without objection, consent is approved. Thank you very much, board. We are now moving on to item D, the superintendent's communication. Student trustees, I believe you're going to go first, and then we're going to have the superintendent. Thank you, everyone.
All right, great. Thank you.
Hold on one second. Let's get your report pulled up. Board, remember, we're doing three questions and a minute and a half comments. If you need more time, please just ask. Or more space for questions, please ask.
Okay, so yes, we're back with another student trustee report meeting today. We're going to be going over what we've been doing since our last meeting for ASC, what we've been doing. What we've been doing after, besides that and everything, yeah, we're just going to be telling you guys what we've been up to lately. So, yeah, next slide. All right, so a quick overview of what we're going to be going over. For starters, the All Student Congress, just some updates that we have for you guys. And we're going to just go into what we'll be doing in the future as well, just future meetings and additional plans. And then after that, we are planning on sort of pitching an idea of a project that we're currently working on just so you guys can get a feel for what we're going to be presenting in coming weeks. And then we're just going to go into individual site updates and that should be it for that presentation. Next slide, please. All right, so we're just going to start with the All Student Congress updates. Next slide, please. So we've been continuing our meetings to further continue solidifying the process and foundations of ASC this year. And at our last meeting, we introduced a new partnership with Creative Change Collaborative. And they've been helping us learn how we can further solidify and improve ASC, as I mentioned. And ASC has a group that is educated and trained on how we can work better together as we do the work that we do to help serve the community and our schools. And Daniela will go into them a little bit more after this one, but continue on. With them, we've been able to introduce subcommittees that will help us further build positions within ASC and set processes so that, for example, the new students in ASC who are, for example, interested in becoming student trustees, where CCC, as they're called, is helping us solidify that process and those positions so that we can help ASC students go along the process of becoming student trustees, if that's something they're interested in, and just helping build ASC. And through those, we've also committed, as I said, subcommittees that include research, recruitment, and more. And yeah, Daniela and I will go into more about those. And yeah, those subcommittees are optional, but all our ASC members are working hard to collaborate within them. And yeah, that's what we discussed at our last meeting and that's what we've been up to in ASC lately. And next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit more about this new partnership that we just recently formed. We actually started in March, I believe. And it is called Creative Change Collaborative. They're based in Oakland. They have a lot of experience with, in general, youth advocacy and more specifically, the ACC in Oakland. They provide intergenerational restorative justice training, coaching, technical assistance, and overall resources to schools, community organizations, nonprofits, you name it. They pretty much provide a lot of assistance with things like that. For us, they've been a lot more focused on the restorative justice aspect of it and also the circle building because, as we've mentioned, we are trying to build up ASC. So we're trying to get everybody used to each other, get everybody familiarized with how it is that restorative justice works in general in programs like the ASC or like the ACC. So yeah, that's kind of what our partnership with Creative Change Collaborative has looked like thus far. We've met with them a couple of times, starting in March, as I mentioned. And we are continuing to bring them on to our ASC meetings periodically. And they're also helping facilitate the subcommittees that we mentioned before, which, next slide. These are the subcommittees that we are currently looking at and working on. The first one is our recruitment selection and voted in process, which focuses on how we select for ASC and also how we select for student trustee. Essentially researching how it looks like for our district, what we. Um, essentially researching how it looks like for our district, what we could do differently, how it looks like for other districts, and what we can kind of take from them and, uh, make our own. And similarly, the research aspect of it also does the same thing. Um, they research the different districts, more specifically how they function. Um, not as much the election process, but the actual, uh, governing bodies of it, how they work, how they do their specific meetings, how often they meet, um, details like that, so we can try to not necessarily emulate what other districts are doing, but look at what works, look at what doesn't work, and see what we can use for ourselves and what we can create and make our own.
Um, some other subcommittees we also have are historians, so they're basically documenting ASC history as it happens and, um, in the past as well. Um, and they're, uh, making sure that they're recording findings that we, uh, come across within ASC, new events, new moments that are like pretty much historical within ASC. Um, and right now, they're working on, uh, pretty much just recording, uh, as we're developing ASC and laying down the foundation. They're also making sure that they're learning how they can better record those moments. And so in the future, we have, you know, the moment that we introduced CCC, for example, they have that down. Um, so, and we're also, another subcommittee also includes, uh, creating job roles and expectations. Um, I am personally a part of this committee, um, and our job is to basically research other school districts, other schools that have, um, uh, basically board and committee similar to ours here in WCCUSD, and research how they name their job positions and what expectations that they have for each position that they recruit for and that they hire for. Um, so for example, we look into, uh, what kind of expectations they have for, uh, student representatives that they have, similar to like student trustees. And we basically, uh, are, we're researching right now to see how they do that process and how they, uh, fill out those roles within their districts and schools so that we could take inspiration from them, um, get ideas on how we could personally do those for our district and for our job roles. Next slide, please. Uh, and now we'll be going into just some like future stuff we're gonna be doing for ASC. Uh, so, yeah, uh, for ASC, we're planning to meet, um, we have a meeting tomorrow, uh, and we have decided to do our meetings a little bit longer than what we had originally agreed on, but that's, um, because everyone is willing to work together and, um, continue be, putting in that process of developing ASC, as I said. So yeah, we have a meeting tomorrow, and then we have a meeting in May, Thursday, eight, the eighteenth, and then June will, would June be our last meeting? Yeah, June will be our last meeting, um, on the first.
Um, and then, as it was mentioned before, the subcommittees do meet a little bit more than all of ASC. Um, they'll be meeting, they've already met two times, um, up until today. The dates kind of differ. It just kind of depends on when, uh, committee members are available. We're trying to figure out if we wanna set up some solid dates when they always will meet, or if it's always just gonna, gonna come up to availability. Um, as we said, we kind of just introduced this in March, so we're working out the logistics. Um, but we are planning on meeting at least once between May first and seventeenth. Um, and yeah, so if you guys are ever interested in being involved in any of these, or you wanna come in, we're more than welcome to extend that invite out. Um, just let us know. And next slide, please. So next, we kind of wanted to talk about a project that we're actually really excited about. Um, next slide. So what you're gonna find in pretty much the remainder of the presentation, with the exception of, um, our individual site updates, is what this project, uh, that we're working on is, why we're doing it, and how we intend to go about it. Um, so next slide.
Yeah, so for this project, our main idea and question was with our inspiration for this project was how we could strengthen the career pathways and awareness between our high schools and middle schools, and how, once like middle school students are going into high school and joining clubs and, um, uh, programs we have, like at Richmond High, we have academies, how we could further maximize the, um, success of those clubs and the success of those programs as, um, middle school students enter high school, and but how we could do that while they're still in middle school. Next slide, please.
Um, so the reason why we're doing this, uh, there's like three main ones. Um, for starters, we have like the personal aspect of it. Uh, both of us have been involved in a lot of our schools', um, respective, uh, activities, extracurriculars, and we've seen firsthand how it's impacted based on whether you start in middle school or whether you start right when you go into high school. Um, so that's kind of our own personal journey. I know for me, that has been, uh, very heavily influenced with music. I know I started music when I was in elementary school and kind of continued my involvement all throughout, um, my career with the district. Um, but I know other students aren't as fortunate, and they don't get to really start that until they go into high school, and until they get that experience with academies, like Haley mentioned. Um, so that's kind of what I've seen on my personal experience.
Yeah, and for my own personal experience, um, I went to Helms, um, before I transitioned into, uh, Richmond High, and I remember many of my friends and I remember at Helms, there's not really a academy system like there is at Richmond High, but it wasn't until around our eighth grade year that we found out we technically do have academies. Um, we have houses there as well, like C one, C two, and C three, of course, but we apparently also had academies that were supposed to help transition us into the academies at Richmond High, if I remember correctly, of course. Um, but like I said, at middle school at Helms, we had no clue about that. And it wasn't until we got to Richmond High and we learned about those academies, and we learned about how they basically introduced different careers to students who possibly didn't know what they wanted to go into. Um, but that transition going into, um, Richmond High, after being told that we should have been in these like academies, uh, more involved in these academies in middle school, that transition into Richmond High for me personally was kind of jarring because I was put into a place, they, they assigned students into random academies. Um, and you know, in my opinion, I think that transition is just a little drawing for students who aren't sure what they wanna do in the future, what they wanna be in the future, and assigning them into random academies, they do have the option to choose. Um, but I, we wanted to emphasize how it might be more important to teach middle schoolers the importance of knowing that they have options at an earlier age, maybe more in middle school, before that, before they can start choosing those academies and furthermore. Um, and then another, uh, inspiration behind this project was teachers. Um, I know from us personally, uh, we have many teachers that we've been taught by that also agree that they do struggle having, feeling like they have support from, uh, not just the district or not from just the schools and admin, but support teaching, um, uh, students who they feel are also very lost and don't, are unsure what they wanna do personally. Um, and teachers have expressed that they want students to be further educated and more aware about the fact that they have options going into high school and after high school about what they can do. And furthermore, wish they had more funding, wish they had more support from admin, the district, from the school in general, that can help them support the, the, um, pathways that they do have. For example, um, music within the district is very, um, arts within the district and in schools across America in general are very underfunded most of the time. And teachers have expressed that when students are, are aware of what they wanna do, for example, in music, that they wish they had more support with funding the, those music programs so that they could encourage students to continue pursuing what they want. So teachers have expressed that when it does come to students who know what they want or are participating in certain programs, um, a lot of the times, there often aren't the resources for them to continue doing that.
And then the final, uh, factor of this was the overall community. We have a wonderful community here at the district. We have great music programs. We have some really good work in the academies. Uh, Richmond comes to mind first just because of Kaylee, the law academy, different academies throughout other high schools in the district. A lot of them have very strong programs. However, part of why we're trying to do this is because we love imagining how much stronger these programs could be if they could have been initiated much sooner. If students were aware that these options were there for them, the community as a whole could really just flourish a lot more, and that's something that we've realized ever since we kind of came into the board. It's something that we talked about starting, um, and a bulk of it did start because of what we saw within the community. Um, so next slide, please. Um, so this is kind of what we are looking at the progression of our little project, uh, looking like. So the initial phase that we're starting with is pretty much just survey-based. Um, figuring out what middle school sites would be willing to help us out by sending out surveys to their students, um, so we can gather input on how students feel about this. Um, we wanna know their thoughts on if it's a problem for their specific site, if they think that their site is doing something bad, something good, and how we can help them if they think that it is something that is, uh, lacking. And we're planning on doing this pretty much through surveys, an initial wave of surveys in specific middle schools.
Yes, and then phase two of the ideal progression also involves, um, once we have like initial feedback from those first couple of surveys, maybe hearing back, um, through more surveys from students about what they're personally interested in, what they personally wanna see, like we mentioned, um, what they wanna see and what they wanna know more about specifically, so we can get an idea of what maybe we could start implementing specifically through this, um, whole project and everything.
And then the final thing is essentially presenting that all to you guys. Um, we are planning on kind of can, throughout the process, bringing up the things that we're finding, but we do wanna kind of have it end up in a big presentation of what it is that we found altogether. Um, we can give you guys breakdowns of, as we get the initial surveys and then the second surveys, or, um, however you guys might wanna see that. But we do wanna finish off with just a general overall presentation, hopefully towards the end of our term, um, with the students' feelings, students' ideas, and then also our own personal suggestions, just based on all of that. Um, yeah, that's pretty much all that we have for the project aspect of it. So next slide, please.
Yeah, and now we'll just present our individual school findings. Uh, so quick disclaimer before we move on to individual findings. Uh, because of, uh, CCC, um, coming into ASC and everything to help us out with that process, we haven't been able to get, um, individual school findings from the, um, ASC members. So today, we only have school findings from Richmond and Middle College. Um, but next meeting, we will hopefully definitely have school findings from each school site, um, well, that we get from ASC. Um, okay, so, uh, Richmond High, we have lots of upcoming events, um, coming up. So tomorrow, we have our four-year, uh, Acceptance Celebration that is being put on by the College and Career Center, and it's to celebrate anyone who's been accepted to a four- or two-year, uh, university or college, and then to celebrate, bring their families, and to celebrate them for, um, pursuing higher education and working very hard. Um, Prom is also this Friday. Um, seniors and juniors are looking very forward to it. Um, our senior barbecue is coming up, I believe, yeah, May eleventh. Uh, and we have academy awards coming up, so each academy is gonna do an award ceremony, um, for students and to celebrate the students of their respective academies. Um, marching band has our, uh, very anticipated Disneyland trip coming up in, I believe, the second to last week of May, or the last week of May. Um, very anticipated. We're all very excited. Um, it should be a very cool trip. Um, and then we have, of course, the graduation coming up on June eighth.
And then another small thing, uh, Richmond High Band is also performing Cinco de Mayo Parade. It's not on there, but another little thing we're both involved in, so I thought we should mention it. Um, and then for Middle College, our school year is pretty much wrapping up. We only really have three weeks left of school. Um, but we do have our Culture Night tomorrow, uh, April twenty-seventh. I believe it starts between six or it might be seven. Um, I can double-check if any of you are interested in attending. I can send you the information, um, but it will be at CCC. Um, we have our Senior Decision Day, uh, May fifth. Our Prom is May sixth. Our CCC graduation is May nineteenth. Um, that's for any of our students who are graduating with their AA degrees or their STEM certificates. Um, and then our high school graduation is the day after on May twentieth. Um, next slide. And that essentially concludes what we had to present to you guys, so thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. And if you have any questions or any comments, we'd be happy to hear them.
Thank you so much, student trustees. That was absolutely wonderful. Board, we're gonna take questions for them first, Dr. Hurst, and then we'll go to your superintendent's report. Board, do you have any questions for the student trustees? Remember, we're gonna try three questions and one and a half minute comments. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the terrific presentation. Would you be able to tell us about how many students are on the All Student Congress? And then the, the grades and how they find out about, um, about the Congress and how they join?
I believe right now it's around less than fifteen of us or so, um, from each school site. We still have had some trouble getting students from, I believe, Greenwood. We haven't, I don't think we've had students from Greenwood attending. Um, so we're trying to, um, go over that still and see if they, there's any students who are still interested in that. Um, as, do you wanna explain how to? Yeah, but we have around like fifteen students, um, or less than that.
And then, in terms of how students found out about All Student Congress, that was something that we were a little frustrated with, um, this school year because they actually didn't get an opportunity to really sign up themselves. Um, they were actually emails sent out, I believe, to the principals of all the sites. Um, basically requesting for the principal to choose two students. Um, I think some sites in, informed their students that this option was out there. Others just kind of chose who they wanted to choose, um, which is kind of why we implemented specifically the Recruitment Selection and Voted In Process Subcommittee of Things, because we didn't really like how it worked out this year. We thought that's part of why we didn't have as many, as much of a turnout. Um, so we're hoping that next year, I believe, that we can actually have an election process for them where they can actually find out about the All Student Congress, and whoever wants to apply for it can apply for it. Um, so it should work a little bit different than what it did this year.
And then what grades is the Congress open to?
Uh, yeah, uh, ASC is open to all grades, I believe. I'm pretty sure. Yeah, middle school to high school. Yeah, and if anyone is interested in joining ASC, we had, um, I believe it was Ashton who did, um, that presentation for Black History Month in February, who emailed us asking that he was interested in joining ASC and how he could get that information. So if any student is ever interested in middle school or high school, if they're ever interested in joining ASC, we do accept emails and, and just an email from them with their information, what school they go to, what grade, um, and contact information, and they can join ASC. We're more than happy to take them.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I just, I do have a brief comment at the end.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, Board? Go ahead, Trustee Christian.
Yeah, question, uh, you, you guys mentioned about, um, the relationship, uh, like, uh, the transition, can you? You hit that?
You, um, want us to talk a little bit more about like the transition from middle school to high school? Within like the project that we're hoping to discuss? Uh, yeah, so basically, we both just, um, from what we've found within the community, within teachers and our own personal findings, just feel like the transition from middle school to high school regarding how students, um, know about pathways to careers, um, at schools like Richmond High where we have like academies that, um, kind of set pathways, career pathways for student, for students, we kind of want to implement that basically within all middle schools in the district, or at least help students have a better idea of what they want to begin joining clubs for, studying for, um, doing programs for as they go into high school about what careers they want to pursue in the future. Um, just because we feel like what, from what we've seen and observed within the district, within our own personal findings, that sometimes, most, most of the time, students go into high schools, wherever they go, very unsure of what they want to be when they're older. I mean, I know personally, I did not know for sure what I wanted to do until junior year last year. Um, and for some students, the reality is that they take even longer to figure that out for themselves. So we really wanna try and help students feel comfortable in knowing that they have options and knowing that they, um, and anytime they can ask questions and they can, they can go somewhere to be educated about their options and have more awareness about, um, their career options during that transition from middle school to high school. So, sorry, but whether that's that like orientations for the high school they're going to or for, um, a summer school programs that they're doing, summer bridge, I know Richmond High, I believe, does, so things like that, more awareness.
Yeah, and I think within the presentation that we made, there are like two keywords to take from that, um, original question that we have. One of them is like strengthen. Um, we know that there are some existing things within the middle schools that are already in place to kind of help students, uh, know about these things. However, we're trying to figure out how we can strengthen those pre-existing things before we start trying to create completely new things. And then a second keyword being awareness as well. Um, again, we know that it's very difficult to just start implementing new programs and implementing new things, new systems. However, raising awareness for the ones that are currently there or the ones that we are trying to strengthen is also a key part of what we're trying to do. Um, so those are just two keywords that I think. Um, so those are just two keywords that I think uh you guys should keep in mind when you hear what we're uh pitching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board comments, but before we go to comments, let's put up our timer, a minute and a half, please, for board comments. And trustee Reckler, I see that you have comments. And president, or trustee Christian, do you have comments? Okay, so a minute and a half, we're gonna wait for that timer. I also have comments. Trustee Reckler, you can go first, please.
Thank you. So once again, I just wanna thank you for really a terrific report. The work that you're doing is great and it's really important. And I also couldn't have big picked a better topic for you guys to work on about how to spread the word on pathways. So I'm just thrilled that you've undertaken that work. Somebody heard me, so thank you. Um, thank you for taking that up because we have so many amazing pathways. There are so many interesting, creative pathways in all of our schools. And so I'm really glad that that's gonna get get some light. And having light on it from students is better than what we as adults could ever tell students, so that's terrific. The other thing which I'm really intrigued about and is important because you're building institutional knowledge and you're not gonna know this now, but later in life you will. But the historian reports are really helpful because it will show you over time how you ended up where you did. And those are really important, um, just to capture uh thought and activities. And and in a brief document like what you did over a year. So the, so those are great projects. I'm, I'm really happy to receive this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Reckler. Trustee Christian, go ahead, please.
Okay, I would just wanna say to 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 the student trustee, you're doing a good work. And um, that area, it 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 needs that connection. Because if you have the connection from this elementary, middle, and to in the high school. You you will have a better journey. So, yeah, I like it.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. I also have a comment. Um, student trustees, that was absolutely phenomenal. Absolutely great job. You really knocked it out of the park. Um, I would ask for you to ask for um support and resources to help you with this. Also, um, Dr. Hurst, I wanna make sure they understand all of our middle school models. We have K-eight programs, we have six, seven, eight middle schools, we have just seven, eight middle schools. So understanding all the different middle school models will make sure that you don't leave anyone out, right? And that you make sure that each middle school model gets what they need to help with their transition into their primary. Um, high school, okay? So that's the first thing. The other thing is I would um encourage you all to go slow to go fast, right? Because you are building historical knowledge and someone's gonna do this after you. So if you do it well, then it's just, it becomes annual, right? It becomes something that's repetitive and something that's foundational. So I think that you're doing an excellent job. I'm very excited and proud to be a part of it. I would like you to email me um every invitation. I love to show up. So email me every invitation and I will be there the best that I can. Thank you so much, student trustees. Um, we are now moving on to the superintendent report if there are no more questions or comments from the board. Seeing none, we are moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Hurst, Dr. Hurst, please.
Thank you so much. If we can go to the next slide, please. We wanted to start off with our memoriam. The district would like to take the time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who've passed away. We regret to inform you that Richard Dixon, special ed pair professional at Elsrieda High School recently passed away. Mr. Dixon also worked at Stewart and Pinot Valley High School. He had been a dedicated district employee since two thousand nine and retired from the U- United States Air Force instructor of flight engineering. At Travis Air Force Base. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Dixon family and friends. Additionally, I regret to inform you that Dr. Robert Smith, husband of Scotty Smith. Parent liaison and community activist for special ed, passed away. Dr. Robert Smith was a nationally recognized expert on African-American politics. Whose research has examined comparisons between President Obama and President Kennedy. And the relationship between converts conservatism and racism in the United States. He was a professor emeritus of political science at San Francisco State University. I ask now that we have a moment of silence to recognize these losses. Thank you. Next slide. We're so proud of Sheila McKinney. Um, she was the California State Student of the Year, or is the California State Student of the Year. You can see uh her holding up her plaque in the right picture. Senior Sheila McKinney and coach Michelle Lamones spent the weekend in San Diego. For the California High School Speech Association Championship and came home with a first-ever honor. Sheila was named the California State Student of the Year out of many. She wrote a great piece of what forensic means. Next slide. We also wanted to give a shout out to Principal Jelani Cortez. Principal Jelani Cortez is the principal of DeJohn Middle School. Uh, she invited several staff members to participate in her reclassification ceremony. And I wanted to just share a little bit with you what the ceremony was about. If we can go to the next slide and play the video.
Hello and welcome families, students, and staff to our twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three reclassification. Celebration of LaFayette DeJohn Middle School. I also want to honor the families that supported them through their experience. I look forward to the wonderful things that you will do as you move forward as scholars in our community and beyond. Again, congratulations to all our students and families. I'm excited to spend some time with you today in celebration. Thank you. I also want to honor the families that supported them through their experience.
What's really impressive about Principal Cortez is she regularly celebrates and honors her students. If you remember, uh, a while back ago, I brought another uh video where she was recognizing. Uh, black excellence uh within the school and those who had a GPA of three-point-five and above. And now you see her recognizing our students trying to acquire the English language and reclassification. So I would just wanted to honor her and celebrate her for recognizing regularly her students. And then the next slide. During some of my visits, I had the opportunity to just sit in with principals and look at really great instruction and pedagogy. And I thought that this was um worth sharing with uh the board. And I welcome uh any board member that wants to go into the classroom with me during my visits. Uh, here, I just thought it was uh great how she brought this to the students. Uh, they were working on fractions and subtraction of fractions. But also comparison of fractions and multiplication as well. But what I found impressive is she didn't just jump right into the lesson. She started off with with what the students knew before she went into the lesson. And she shared with the students two models or two approaches to this one particular fraction question comparison. Trying to figure out from the student's perspective which is greater, either one-fifth or five-twelfths. So instead of just going straight into getting a common denominator, she decided to just share with them, let's look at an area model. And let's look at a number line model. And she had the students talk about that amongst themselves. What those models were and then had them actually work on it first, and then she put it up on the board. Um, so you could see um both um area models are the same size. She did the one-fifth, and then she also did the five-twelfths, and you can automatically see that five-twelfths is greater. Um, so I just thought that was impressive on how the teacher um at Murphy Elementary uh was working with the students. I wanted to share that with you. Next slide. We also wanted to take the time to, um, yay. We actually have a video that I was gonna share. Um, of them getting their gifts and being treated very well. They are two special individuals, uh Rosa and Genesis. Um, but I wanted to just say along with what Kim Chamberlain's shared. Our administrative assistants and secretaries work so hard. So I wanted to give a shout out to all of our secretaries and administrative professionals across the district for all the hard work that you do. We could not, could not do this work uh without you. And I know that I could not do this work as a superintendent without Rosa and Genesis, and I do appreciate them. And I just wanted to share that publicly. So thank you, Rosa. Thank you, Genesis, for all of you do, all that you do. And for all of our administrative professionals across the district. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Board, we're gonna, did you have a video for them or no? No, okay. Um, board, we're gonna do three questions and then.
They asked me not to show it.
Oh, I understand, I understand. Board, we're gonna do three questions and a minute and a half uh comments. Any questions about the superintendent's report? Comments about the superintendent's report? Uh, trustee Reckler, can we get the timer up for one minute and thirty seconds, please?
So I also just wanna thank all the administrative professionals in our district. And also I wanna thank Rosa and Genesis, cuz not only do they support the superintendent, but they support the whole board too. And probably most of cabinet, so it is, those are not easy positions and I really appreciate what you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Reckler. Anyone else have comments? Yes, trustee Santos.
It's more of a question cuz we were kinda talking about it. Um, but are we also allowed when it comes to the site visits, uh specifically middle schools? Um, are we allowed to also go into those as well?
Yeah, so we have done that with the uh previous student trustees, so yes, but we would just need to make arrangements with the school, but absolutely.
Great minds think alike. That was actually in my comment, so that's great. Um, anyone else have a comment? I have a comment. Um, you are the glue that holds it all together. Um, we really appreciate you. The, everyone who's ever been on a site knows that the admin. The administrative assistants on a site really holds it together. I've been at the district uh now for three years. And I understand that you really hold it together down there. So thank you very much for all that you do. And you should be acknowledged and valued every single day. But I'm glad that he got you some nice flowers that are not from the local grocery store. Thank you, sir. Um, I appreciate that. And again, thank you for all that you do. You are very valued. Um, Sheila is from Pinot Valley High School, which is amazing. Pinot is doing very well this year. She may not carry a ball, but the words that she carries are immensely valuable. That she is a powerhouse. She is a wordsmith, and if you have not heard her work, seek out her work. She is absolutely amazing. Um, we already talked about students going on site visits. That was part of my comments. I encourage you, Dr. Hurst, to have your administrators, reach out to the board. If they're having an event. And the board can come, the board will come, and that includes our student trustees. Reach out to all of us and invite us to those wonderful events because we wanna make sure that we're honoring students. And we need to know the good things that are happening in our district as well, so we can make sure that we are uplifting and elevating those things. Um, thank you, everyone. I am complete. Sorry, I cut it off before I was actually complete. Okay, board, thank you very much. We are moving on and we are making great time. Thank you. We are now on item E, action items. There are none. So now we're moving on to item F. We are discussion items and reports. Please uh remember that we do public comment after the report or the presentation from the district. Dr. McIntyre, I believe this is your item?
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, hold on Fran, say it again, slowly.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you. Go ahead.
So tonight, we're bringing uh a revised board policy for the board, Board Policy thirty-three twenty, Claims and Actions Against the District. Uh, this is the board policy that tells staff or direct staff how we treat claims against the district. And this ballot policy uh hasn't been updated since two thousand eight. And so we've collaborated and sought guidance uh on this policy from the California School Boards Association. And we've, what we've provided here tonight for board's input and discussion and potentially changes at the board's direction. Uh, it is, it is updating all the laws and regulations particularly related to the property and liability insurance provisions. And the underwriting crit- criteria and the legal rights of claimants against the district. The policy was review, re-reviewed and revised based on the current regulations and laws and aligns to those recommended by CSBA. The post-proposed amendments authorize the superintendent to de-delegate settlement authority for up to fifty thousand dollars, which he currently has. Uh, to a staff member and clarifies the reporting out of claim settlement requirements per the Brown Act. Meaning that we would have to bring all claims settled by staff to the board at least once a month. Uh, the first stage of this process is to bring it here for first reading, which we're doing tonight. And if the board pur-desires to provide feedback or suggestions for revisions, they can. I do know that one question that came up during a board meeting preparation with individual board members was. Despite the fact that this policy says fifty thousand, we're, we currently have a qualified budget, which means we have to bring anything forward that's a twenty-five thousand dollars or more. I do not believe this revision supersedes or overrides or waves that twenty-five thousand dollar provision. I believe that sits on top of all of our other policies until we get back to a positive budget, budget, budget certification. Uh, and so with that, staff is 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 putting forth this proposal for board's direction and hopefully future approval.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. Board, do we have any questions? Okay, we're gonna do three questions and then we'll do comments. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a slash question comment, which is, it does go back to the board policy that we do currently have. That if the budget is qualified, anything that's twenty-five thousand or more needs to be, you know, listed in contracts. What, once again, please explain what you think this policy does? With, you know, with that board policy that we have, and then would a clarification be needed um when it comes back?
Thank you. It's a great question and 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 clearly uh well into the minutia, which which we appreciate in board policies. Um, a-as I read it, your, we're, the policy you're referencing is separate and kinda sits on top of all the other policies. and kinda sits on top of all the other policies. So as, as it's written here, this policy says, well, under, under current regulations, the superintendent is one has to sign any settlement agreements, fifty thousand or below. Uh, all this, one of the updates in this allows the superintendent to have a designee, whether it be the CBO position, the CAO, whoever he or she, the superintendent at this time, designates. Um, under, because we have a separate board policy that says, in the event we have a qualified or negative budget, all these other things are triggered, it sits on top of all of our board policies. So in this case, what it was, what we would, what our actions would be is any settlement that was twenty-five thousand dollars or above, we would actually bring it to the board for approval and would not approve it administratively. But we would instead approve anything twenty-five thousand and below administratively until we were in better financial situation.
Okay, and I tried to look for that policy today. I did not have a lot of time to dig it up. Do, do, will you check it before it comes back again, or are you sure?
Well, I, I have read it, and that's my understanding. Uh, and I'll make sure that that is how we're enforcing it moving forward, because I believe that's consistent with what the board was trying to achieve in that other policy.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else.
Any other questions? No, any comments? Trustee Reckler?
I'm fine with it.
I'm sorry. Trustee Reckler, just give me one second for the timer to come up. I apologize. Maybe we have the minute.
It'll take you longer to get the timer up.
Then your comment will, you know, I like to be consistent. Let's see. Go on Fran. Okay, let's throw that up. Hold on a minute. Okay, go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
I'm, I'm fine with it. As it's written and as it's presented, it is a cleanup that aligns with CSBA, and we have our other board policy that, you know, puts a stopper on spending, so I'm fine. I'm fine with it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other board comments? This does not require action. Thank you, Dr. McIntyre, for bringing this forward. I do have a comment. Um, let's wait for the timer. Dr. McIntyre, I'm a very visual learner. So to have this up on the screen would have helped me a little bit, just the policy that you're talking about or the revision that you're talking about. So um, Dr. Hurst, because I know I'm not the only visual learner in the world, if we can make sure that we're able to at least project a slide up for us when we're having these discussions, I would appreciate it. Thank, you did a great job explaining it, so I could follow it. But it would have just been easier for me to be able to see it visually. Thank you. Okay, Board, we are doing great. It is seven forty-six, and we are on Agenda Item G, Comments from the Board of Education and Future Agenda Items. Board, remember, we are going back to closed session after this. Okay, Board comments. Everybody need a minute to gather themselves? No, you're ready. Okay. Uh, for Board comments, let's do two minutes. And Trustee Reckler, when the timer is on, you may go.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of things. Once again, my gratitude to food service workers and administrative professionals, administrative assistant professionals. I also wanted to shout out that we got a tiny little award from Measure X for older adult school outreach of ten thousand dollars. Beggars can't be choosers. I'll take it. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you to Mr. McIntyre and um, his team, and also to um, all the people in Elstridown Richmond who helped to bring this to my attention and push it through, and Janet Abelson, we got it done. Um, there is a Community Advisory Committee for Special Education on meeting on Monday, May first, online. You, it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and all special ed, parent, and guardians, or anybody else interested is welcome to join. You can find the Zoom link by going to WCCUSD, and then Special Education, and there is a big blue button that says Community Advisory Committee, and press on that, and you'll get all the information about how to um, come to the meeting virtually. Uh, last Saturday, I went to the Transition Fair um, with Ms. Bishop and Ms. Neely Johnson and all our resource parents. It was a great event and very well attended. So thanks, everybody um, who put that together. And then on Friday, there is a Parent University Graduation at Fair Day, which is one of my favorite events ever. So I will be there uh, helping to graduate. I think it's thirteen parents who've completed the Parent University course, and so I'm really looking forward to that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Reckler. Any other comments from the board? Go ahead. Wait one second, Fran. Let me, okay, now you can go.
Uh, just some extra stuff that we uh, didn't mention earlier today, but we forgot to. Um, Richmond High is also getting ready for our play um, on May eleventh and twelfth. Um, it's uh, there are a play called Juliet Takes a Breath being hosted and put on by GSA. We just wanted to mention, we're both in it. Um, so many students are as well. So if that's something you guys wanna come and see, May eleventh and twelfth, feel free to come, and we'll definitely forward you an invitation or anything. Anyone who wants to come and see at Richmond High. Um, oh, and, sorry. Um, also wanna give a shout out to all the seniors who have been receiving scholarships for the past few months, getting into colleges. Um, and this is your official reminder, if you're a senior in college who applied to college, I mean, it was a senior in high school, forgive me, um, who applied to colleges to, uh, remember to commit to a school before May first. So, yeah.
Very good. Any other comments from the board? You're just all in my head today. That, I was gonna say that too, because I have a senior. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead. Trustee Santos.
Um, and the similar fashion, just a few other invitations. Um, for our Culture Night event tomorrow, I'll be sure to forward you guys the exact time where it's happening. I believe it is open to the public, so we'll be more than happy for you guys to come. Um, it is like, middle colleges pull so many students from different areas of the district, and it's great to see all of the cultures that are incorporated in that. Um, and then another thing that we didn't mention, because it wasn't our site specifically, um, but the twenty-third annual reclassification ceremony is happening, and we're both going to be speaking in that as well. So we just wanted to like, highlight that and shout that out. I believe it is May second. Yeah, um, so that's just something uh, interesting that's coming up. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you for listening to the presentation earlier, by the way. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Well, I have a comment, but I have to rearrange it now, because everyone has said everything I wanted to say. Yes, oh. Hold on, sorry, uh, Trustee Christian, my bad. I ain't see you over there. Okay, Trustee Christian, let me start the timer again. Hold on. Okay, Trustee Christian, you're up.
All right, I just wanna thank everyone uh, for their hard dedication work throughout the whole school year. And as we ready approach the closing of the school year, um, and everybody, I appreciate, because without you, you know, we would not be to this point here. Uh, also, I just wanna mention, uh, I had a opportunity, chance. Actually, I went on a college trip with the college students and um, the uh, BSU. And, and, and we went, they went to the historical black colleges, and so it was, it was a wonderful trip. Um, it, it was, it was a blessing to a lot of students, because they got a chance to see other colleges on the East Coast, uh, historical colleges. And so uh, and that's pretty much, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Okay, I do have a comment. I'm gonna wait for the timer. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, uh, Board. We've done a wonderful job. Again, remember, we're heading back to closed session, and then we'll be back out. Community, thank you for joining the, the board meeting. We really appreciate your input and you always uh, showing up. Student trustees, again, great job. Absolutely wonderful. I appreciate all the announcements that everyone's doing. Dr. Hurst, it would be great to get in on a um, a slide with the calendar. I know we have the district calendar, but just to make sure that all of these announcements are readily available for the community to find these events, because they're all great events. I do wanna make an announcement that the Budget Contract Committee will meet uh, Tuesday, May second, from nine-thirty to two o'clock at Alvarado Adult School. All are welcome. It will also be on Zoom. Please look at the district calendar to find that Zoom information. Also wanna thank everyone again for their participation and for coming and showing up. Administrative assistants, thank you for everything that you do. Absolutely wonderful. Um, Dr. uh, Sonya Neely Johnson, uh, doctor, uh, is the sped prom this weekend? Pause my timer, Fran. I'm asking a question. I'm taking, I'm taking presidential privilege. Hold on. Oh, please, uh, make that announcement, please. That's great.
We will have our first, um, I would say inaugural um, ESN Prom for all of our students in eleventh through transition age. It will be this Saturday at Deanza High School from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM.
Absolutely wonderful. Thank you so very much. I can't wait to see those pictures in the next superintendent report about the first ever uh, prom, our sped prom. So that's absolutely wonderful. Thank you for all that you do. Any other staff announcements? No? Great. Okay. Um, you can start my timer again. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and thank you, community. You are absolutely wonderful, and we look forward to continuing the good work at the district level and all of our site levels. We need to normalize not only going to college and university, but also going to work. These seniors are gonna graduate, and some of them are going straight into the job force, and we appreciate that. We need that, and we're normalizing how wonderful that is too. So we would love to hear some of those announcements. If you're going to work in welding or plumbing, or you're going to do any other career that is outside of college and university, this school board is acknowledging you, and we say thank you. Um, those of you who are attending college and university, we also say thank you, and we're looking forward to the next phase of your life. But here at WCCUSD, we normalize all of your next moves and next transitions. We're very proud of you. Thank you for giving us your thirteen years. Okay, Board, the next scheduled regular board meeting will be on May third at uh, twenty-twenty-three at Lavonia Dejawn Middle School. Thank you, everyone. We will be back out after our second closed session. We appreciate you, and when we come back out, if we have something to report, we will report out, and then we will adjourn. Thank you very much. Off to closed session, Board. Good evening, everyone. We are back from our second closed session. We are having a report out, and then we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for your patience. Dr. Hurst, is there any report out from the second closed session, sir?
Yes, there is. Regarding item A-one, the board voted to reject the claim presented on behalf of A. Gonzalez Rico related to alleged property damage. The members voted as follows, four to zero, with one member absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We will adjourn this meeting at eight-twenty-two PM. Thank you, everyone. See you again on May third. We are adjourned.